Are on the April calendar because we are continuing to add services consistently. But just wanted to give the council an understanding of the services we are providing. Here are the overall numbers of the Buena Creek Navigation Center. Very happy to report that some of the initiatives that we took are being used well. For example, individuals coming in with partner. You'll see that we have quite a few people that are coming in with family, friends, or other individuals as a support network. These are often things that will prevent people from going into shelter is not being able to bring their support network into them. And as a coed facility, we are able to house both men and women and people that identify as transgender into the property so that we can support all persons with their support networks. As you can see, we are getting a healthy number of pets. Once again, another support network that's often forgot about in emergency shelters. I don't know the exact number of pets that we have on hand, but since opening, we have serviced 14 pets. Another concern of the councils was to make sure that we are servicing people that are directly from the streets. So you'll see that most of our individuals coming into shelter are people coming in from a place not meant for human habitation, meaning directly from the streets, a vehicle, somewhere else that's not ideal living situation for an individual. So far, we've serviced 83 clients as of last night. We have 44 active clients and we have exited 39 clients.
Quick question about this small thing. I see with gender representation, we have man, transgender woman, and then three dots. Is that meant to be women?
I, we're looking at gender. I see, oh, yes, ma'am. Sorry, that got cut off in the transposition process.
Wanted to make sure I'm reading it right. Pink is for girls after all.
Generally, yes. Any other questions on the slide? Here are the city of Vista overall numbers. These are the numbers that were extracted, so this does not include individuals referred by the city of Encinitas. As you can see, Exodus is providing a majority of the referrals. Close to half of the referrals are coming from Exodus. We do have referrals coming in from PATH. We have one PATH outreach worker that works in the city of Vista. And we have a variety of other programs that are also making referrals. As you can see, one of the interesting numbers that came up is we servicing a lot of people from the COVID era, people that have become homeless either during or after COVID. So very happy to be able to get those people back into housing. And at the bottom, you'll see a number of services and referrals that our case managers are providing. So services are things that the case managers do themselves. So filling out SSI paperwork, helping somebody get access to their bank account, working on resume building, housing assistance is obviously is one of the big ones. Referrals is things that we refer out to. So obviously, we are not medical providers. So if somebody wants medical support, help getting health insurance, we have to refer those to other providers who are able to provide those services.
I'm sorry. If it's okay if we could take a couple of questions so that they're fresh and feel free, Mayor, to contribute as well. I'm looking at the services. I'm seeing top ones are going to be needs assessment, housing, transportation, and medical. That's what I'm seeing. The VI SPDA, housing assistance, transportation, and primary care. What is the difference between the VI SPDA as a needs assessment tool from the housing assistance?
VI SPDA is an assessment that we do specifically within Clarity or HMIS that allows our individuals to get access to housing supports such as permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. So anytime you hear those terms, rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing, a VI SPDA has to be completed. Individuals are then put into a large by name list within what we call CES, which is a coordinated entry system. Individuals are given a score after the VI SPDA and they're selected from that list based off of their score first and then their date that the VI SPDA was completed.
So is it, is it part of the housing assistance?
Theoretically, it can be. VI SPDA's do not guarantee that they will get housing assistance. It is just a means that we can, the way I characterize it is it's we're throwing out another net to get somebody services. So when you're providing case management services, you're trying to access as many resources as possible. And the VI SPDA is one of the means by which we can access those resources.
Thank you for explaining that. I'm recognizing I made a mistake and I was needing to pull oral communications and to allow for speakers on this item either before the presentation or after the presentation's completion. So do we have any oral communication speakers? We didn't? Okay, just wanted to check for that. So we'll definitely take speakers on this item, but I had one more question on the chart that is here. VI SPDA is for the assessments and needs assessment. It might link to housing, but it's also could link to programs, right? That they're eligible for? Is that my?
When we talk about the housing assistance, they can be characterized as programs. So when, let's say, somebody gets connected to a permanent supportive housing voucher, they're going technically into a program. We don't call it a housing assistance. They're entered into a program within Clarity, so that that's might be where some of the verbiage is getting mixed up. But yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
So the VI is vulnerability index. So this is for services that are looking for a vulnerability index or a vulnerability ranking to try and triage services, right?
It is, it is a triage method. The whole shebang stands for Vulnerability Index Service Provider Decision Assistance Tool. So yes, it's identifying the most vulnerable individuals and based off of their vulnerability, they get matched to the programs or services. And those services, like I said, for the most part are permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing.
My mind's just jumping ahead to the question of how many people that we've helped through the NAV Center of, you know, what the outcomes are. It's my most interest, but I know you're going to get there, so I'll wait patiently.
Yeah, we actually have, we have the numbers on successful connections to those services. Overall exit numbers, so as mentioned before, we've had 39 exits from the BCNC. Of those exits, it is a roughly 49, 51% split. 49 people pretty much returning back to a place not meant for human habitation or destination not disclosed, which we're assuming is back to the streets. And 51% are moving on to something equal or if not better than where they were before. The amount of time, as you can see, is about 20 days before somebody moves on to their next place. And we have broken down for you kind of on a 15-day basis in the graph next to the average days. Here we have the Vista exit numbers specifically. Once again, it is a 49, 51% split between returning back to a place not meant for human habitation or destination not disclosed and to a place either equal or better than where they were before. Average days is about average for what overall numbers are at 19.9. And once again, a graph of the approximate days before exiting.
This, you got 29 to 19, whereas the last one was 39 to 20. So your split is much different than 50/50 here. 75, right?
So the top, the 29 exits, those are the total number of exits. And the bottom number is an average day before exit.
Average number of days before exits. That was the average length of time that they were there?
Yes, sir.
And this is Vista only?
This is Vista, yes, sir.
All right. The next slide will have the next comparable number.
That's the end of the presentation. Do we have speakers on this one? No? Okay.
We do have the numbers on the connections to both permanent and rapid rehousing. I was going to leave that for one of Retread staff to provide.
I wonder if you could go backwards one slide?
Yes, of course.
Okay, average number of days. I see, okay. I was misreading the label on that. So 50/50, okay. So how many total unique clients have we served?
We have served a total of 83 individuals.
83. Okay. So going back to the overall slide, which was the second to last. Okay, so looking at this, so this is a 30-day period?
This is since inception.
Okay. So, okay, so 83, so I would subtract the 39 and that would be the remaining population?
This, 39 is exits. Yes, so that would be the remaining population.
Okay, okay. And what is, and I'm curious to know from our Retread staff, what is, can you tell us about the exit interview or the, whether it's voluntarily, you know, whether it's a voluntary process where the client exiting participates in it, which would be hopeful? Or if they don't participate in it, what portion of it? Do you have a standard exit interview form that you complete?
Good morning, Mayor. Currently, we have an exit form, exit interview form, that the case managers are supposed to be filling out upon exit. So if it's a positive exit, it's where they're going. That's where you're getting the numbers. Did they end up with family? Did they end up with housing with lease? Did they end up back on the streets? A lot of our negative exits are clients just simply not showing up and they don't come back. And then we hold their items for a specific amount of time. We reach out to them. But upon those, it's just the case managers were believing that they exited back to a place not meant for human habitation. They just didn't show up overnight.
Do we have numbers on?
We have an actual exit form. And then we're also now beginning to track the 30-day, 60-day, 90-day, where we at least reach out to the clients and see where are they at still after 30 days, after 60 days, et cetera.
I would like to know the difference between on this number 16, place not meant for human habitation or other, whatever is not a desirable outcome, right? How many of those were because they voluntarily just did, stopped participating?
Yeah.
And then how many were exited forcefully or because the program couldn't accommodate them?
So that's where the exit form is going to get better. So right now, in the data entry system that we use, it only had like negative exits versus positive exit where they ended up. And so we just actually recently added, and we could go backtrack even, of like where did they, did they, was it a self-exit? Because on our behalf, we can't control somebody just not showing up for their bed at night and choosing to go back to the streets versus someone that was breaking rule violations, went through the, you know, we have an incident report, then we go to another incident report, and then I, as the program director, either put the person under a behavioral contract, kind of sit them down and say, hey, look, you're kind of on your last string. And then we go from there to an exit. Unless it's a serious, serious rule violation, then they could.
We cannot control if someone doesn't complete the exit survey, right? If they exit without, but we can document that they did not participate.
Yeah.
Could I please have a copy of the exit survey?
Yeah.
For us to review? And then if there is information available currently about what that split is? I know that you've talked about individual treatment. I think that we need to have information on why every single person did exit. And if the exit survey is not currently at full operation, then it should be after today. What would you say?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we can celebrate the successes, but more important to be able to dissect the failures, right? I would like to see for people who, I don't know if we want to call it walkaways or didn't return or whatever our term would be for that. I'd like to see us define that narrowly since we've got all these other categories. Let's have a category for they disappeared.
Yeah, we have a exit destination for the positives. That's fairly clear right there, right? You see all the different categories. So I guess we could come up together with, was it a self-exit? Was it a, you know, a rule violation exit, et cetera?
Yeah, let's, let's have a category that says they walked away without, you know, without communication basically or didn't return or whatever you want to call that to just signify that they just kind of, you know, ceased to participate without communicating, right?
Yeah.
Right, they didn't tell us where they would go, right? Someone might just not participate in the exit survey, but you know when they're leaving. And the best you can assume is that they just went back on the streets, which is probably the case. But I, even if it's, you know, a quick shorthand about why someone had exited rather than a box that's ticked, I would rather have it documented for every single person why they left our facility and under what conditions they left our facility because we're bringing them in to our care. What I'm seeing right now is that we've exited about half, you know, and then we still have another batch of people, right? So we've kind of exited almost as many people as we're, you know, we're currently serving. And we want that number to increase. We want to exit people. But I'm a little bit concerned that people are returning back to the streets. I think that that's expected because as I've advocated, we don't have enough of the permanent housing and long-term shelter resources for folks.
And I join all of you in the assumption that they probably did go back to the street, but I really want to deal in what we know for sure and not make any assumptions in the data. I don't mind if we repeat the assumption that they went back to the place not meant for human habitation, and I accept that that's reality. But I just, I want to label it clearly based on what we really know and can demonstrate. I think that's super important. And then if we observe or learn later, I mean, we can go back and adjust these numbers. I think this should be kind of a living thing. And I know, and I'm glad that you guys have one person that's just doing the data because this is so important. I mean, this is a critical part of why we're failing to solve this problem in the States. We were like, no, it's so important to help people that we can't stop to think about whether what we're doing is working. It's like, we have to do that part of it. So I, and by the way, these numbers are really good in comparison with other programs that, you know, like what the numbers we saw out of Haven House. These are orders of magnitude better. I mean, 50% positive exit rate is like unheard of. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's high praise. You know, I think those numbers are blow away other programs. That's awesome. So got to give you guys kudos for that. Because, I mean, the numbers are in the teens, I think, for other programs, right?
Yeah, and Mayor, what you're requesting is an easy thing for us to be able to do for you.
I also want to share in the celebration of, if you look at the 60 to 90 days stay, I was just speaking with Marcia, right? About the, the positive exit into permanent supportive housing for one of the folks that have come through and have participated for a full 60 days. And that I was really excited to hear about. And those resources are rare, right? So we cannot expect those numbers to always be there. But to know that we've been able to make that link within the first, you know, couple months of opening is really good sign. And I'm glad we are celebrating documenting what the positive exits are. As we go along, we'll get more information about why it's not working for folks.
Yeah.
I do have a couple more questions about services. So if you want to sit down, you're welcome to, but if Mayor has more questions for you, stay available. I have a quick question about primary care. So we're seeing that it's one of the top services and that there are linkages, referrals, five of them were provided. And then another two for health insurance, right? One for dental care. So in reference to primary care, is that also referencing mental and behavioral health
Possibly. I'd actually like to see if we could have Retread speak on how they're documenting that.
So Pete, if you want to help us understand the services that are being provided for medical and how people are being linked to mental health? Because those are, I think those are going to be some of the top referrals that we do. We, we can do housing referrals. That's going to be one of our, our primary tasks. But we also have medical and behavioral health referrals. So I see on the chart, right, we have five referred to primary care. Is, is primary care in this document referring to like somebody being able to go, go, get connected to VCC, to their primary care for anything, right? Like a hurt leg, a diabetes, a mental health? So is that what primary care is referring to here?
Yeah, on this behalf, the primary care, the, the services that he showed you on the corner in the last slide was services that are onsite. So VCCs, primary care, VCCs, HIV testing, et cetera. They'll actually come onsite, but we're also referring people out to their primary care or we're establishing primary care. We had an individual that came in, medical stuff was going on and was not connected to an actually primary care doctor. So I believe that the primary care doctor ones, that's like we've established like an actual primary care doctor instead of referring them out to.
Okay, so follow up. So this corner one here, the bottom, right? That is activities that we have done in-house. We have served five individuals with primary care. How does that look? Is that medical services coming onsite?
It's a variety. So in some cases, I can, like, I can remember two or three of them individually where we established the primary care doctor, where we established where they would even come pick them up for their appointments, et cetera. So with Vista Community Clinic, or we figure out what their primary care doctor is. If they don't have one, we'll try to establish it. Most people already have Medi-Cal. They have Medi-Cal. We ask them, hey, is it Blue Shield? Is it community health? Is it, you know, which one is it? And we can reach out to them to try to establish primary care doctor. Or we can reach out to them to set up an appointment for them, for them to be able to go to themselves.
Yeah. So the folks coming into this setting, I've always understood have high medical and behavioral health needs. I would like to see an increase in the linkages to mental, physical, medical, health services. So helping people get connected to the services as in, I've sat on the phone with clients trying to connect them to their primary care at VCC through Medi-Cal, right? That is an important task that needs to get done. But we also want to be, I think, making sure if we're not documenting that we're doing this already, following up with the guests in the shelter, right? And, and really making sure that medical, and by medical, I'm not only referring to physical health issues, I'm also referring to mental and behavioral health issues. I would, if I had to categorize it all, that would be medical conditions, right? That they can get support. Maybe it's through their primary care. Maybe there's another referral. Maybe it actually opens up an opportunity for them to participate in a program. But because of the high acuity, I, maybe there's a way for the data to be parsed out. So some folks were connecting to their primary care. Some folks are receiving clinic services onsite. Some folks are, you know, being supported with a behavioral health referral, right? I know it can be really hard with insurance and with Medi-Cal and navigating all those systems. So do we have any thoughts on, you know, there's a lot of activities around medical services that we might have to be able to break down that data more to show, here's where we're providing linkages to their insurance and like what their providers are? And here's how we're actually following up with them and making sure that they're accomplishing their health goals as part of their case management plan. What are our thoughts on that?
Yeah. That's something I can, can I call up on somebody?
Yeah.
Is our data analyst, so she's able to break things down a little bit deeper. She kind of informs our staff on, hey, I just created a new column in our data entry. Can you please all go through there?
This, and this might be a good data question, right? But it also might be a case management need. Okay. So data, the primary care, is that referring to different medical services and linking people to their insurance provider?
Yeah, so I think that's pretty encompasses a lot of things. And I think that's a great point that we should be more specific in understanding our clients' needs and like how we're actually serving them. So I think in the future, we can be more specific for insurance linkages, mental health, and physical health. And I think that'd be an asset to us as well. But in this case, primary care, I think that mainly refers to like when VCC comes onsite and our clients are receiving services onsite or getting directly linked to a primary care doctor by our case managers.
Okay. And I do also see a separate point for mental health, but I know that a lot of folks can access mental behavioral health services through their primary care. So when I saw primary care as being such an important linkage, I want to make sure that we're making the most out of the services that they can receive from their insurance. Thank you for helping us parse that out. We can move on to the previous slide where you had questions or if we want to continue this slide's conversation.
I just had a question, which is, are we tracking? And I'm sure probably haven't had our first return client yet, but we probably will at some point in the future. So when we do an entrance interview, are we, are we tracking and reporting or can we those returning clients?
And Hannah, I see you coming up to the front. If you, if you have a comment, please, please step forward when, after, after the mayor's question. Yes, thank you.
So the question is if a client come, like returns to the BCNC?
Yeah, if we reported that somebody had an exit and then three months from now, they come back to us, I'd just like to keep track of that. And I'd like to know that we're, you know, we're keeping data on like, maybe it does take two or more stays for some people to, to get it, you know, a path to, to housing. I don't know what our take is on, I'd love to hear your thoughts on return clients. But more than anything, I just want to know that we're tracking it and we're measuring it. That's going to be a metric that we're going to analyze so we can make decisions about, you know, the value of that.
Yeah, so we haven't experienced that yet considering we haven't been open that long. But we do keep track of clients and we have all of our exited clients. And duplication is also like a big deal in Clarity. So that helps us out too, that if a client comes in, they're already in Clarity and we can see that they've already been enrolled in our services in the past. So we would, it'd be pretty unlikely that we would have a client come in that we wouldn't know that they had already been there before.
Yeah. I guess I'm just making the request at this time that we do track and report those returning clients.
Yeah.
Yeah, Pete? It's all right, we can be a little casual.
Feel free to sit in the front row too, because you guys are.
Thank you, guys. So it's really needed to know, even Retread as our organization's name, it was kind of birthed out of that thing of retreading someone's tires, where it's like giving them a second chance. And so I know that for us to believe that someone comes in our, you know, our program and them to be 100% ready, you know, and I know that sometimes you, you don't know what you have until it's gone, right? And I've had a couple of clients where we have, if they've self-exited, we have a specific amount of days that they're allowed to re-enter, be re-referred. And that number's different depending upon the exit, right? But I think it's very, very vital to have that opportunity open because when we do some of these interviews of like, you know, the 30-day, 60-day, 90-day interviews and they're wanting to get back in and they're, something has changed. I won't say the person's name. I learned my lesson. But we have a, we have a client right now because we're able to do the VI SPDA and because that in Clarity is a different program. It's the coordinated entry system versus the Buena Creek Navigation System. They can actually stay active for up to 90 days with that VI SPDA done and active, even if we're not touching base with them. So it will self-exit them after the 90 days. So I have a client in particular right now that actually was just matched to a housing opportunity. Well, this individual was actually self-exited. He self-exited himself about three weeks ago. And now our case manager got a notification that he has a housing match. So that's something that I would like to explore with Daniel and the team of like, hey, now that this person has a housing match, he's desiring to come back in. He realized it was better for him in our program than back on the streets. Now he also has a housing match. Isn't this something that we want to open our doors to or to be able to, you know, say, hey, come in, get the case management you need while navigating this housing?
It's that housing ready part of it. There's going to be a transition for him now that he has a match, right? Do we have an estimate on the time of that transition?
So it depends if it's rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing, which this is rapid rehousing, so he has some. so he has some income. And so you still are gonna have to explore with the housing provider.
He's looking for a rental unit to use those.
So he would be looking for a rental unit, but he has a housing subsidy that will help him for up to a year because it's a rapid rehousing.
I had another thought with this question about, you know, multiple takes, the retreading. I really appreciate that imagery. I'm looking at the referral agencies. I'm just remarking on, you know, we have a number of referral agencies that when someone is coming in to receive services from the shelter, this is not their first rodeo, they've probably been through some kind of service before. Over time, I would love to be able to see, out of the referral agencies, are there clients that are just really ready to go? Right, are, are we able to maybe partner and like lean in a little bit more to the referrals from agencies that are bringing us clients that are ultimately gonna be successful? Not to deny clients from other locations, but we can, if we can move folks through faster with a lineup of efficient programs, right? You know, I've, I've had positive experiencing working with Alpha Project, right? I know a lot of organizations have different, you know, reputations and skill sets and, and strengths. And so that would probably be more of like a long-term analysis, but I would like to see within those referral agencies, what are some of the ones that are bringing us folks that are ready to go? I'm gonna go back to the healthcare stuff again because I really feel like this is relevant to the positive exits and to the willingness to participate. I, I'm almost feeling like I want y'all to sell the specials, right? Folks come in, it's like, let's take care of you time, right? Someone comes in, it's, it's not a day at the spa, but it is an opportunity for someone to get the care that they haven't had for a really long time. And folks need to be walked through that a little bit. And I know that there's kind of general guidance when it comes to case management and helping people work through some of their medical issues, right? You're not kind of taking the full case of care over for them, right? You guys have a limited role in terms of case management. But programmatically, I would like to see a greater emphasis on the medical. I have a theory, right, that that is going to result in more positive housing outcomes, more of those mental and behavioral health linkages where people can get diagnoses, right, for their mental health conditions. I really want us to be advocating for the folks that are in the shelter, for them to participate in medical and whatever barriers we have to overcome. Do they need more, you know, transportation support? Do they need more coaching? And sometimes going to the doctor can be really scary, right? It can be really hard. So I want us to be cognizant of that when we're offering the myriad of services, someone comes in, not only are you getting a bed and, you know, fresh food every day and community, but you're also gonna get all of the medical care that you need, and especially after being on the streets, there's a lot of things going on with someone that they're gonna want to get checked out. Sometimes people are afraid to actually take that step. So we're not, we don't, none of the program is compulsory, right? People aren't required to go to the doctor in order to, to do that. But I think programmatically, could we make it compulsory by requiring a physical? Is that something that we have in place? Are there any, are there any restrictions to that?
I don't know that there are any restrictions. I would just note that we would wanna have as few barriers as possible. And so if somebody is resistant to it, it might compel them not to accept and take.
Okay, is there a way for us to program it so that a physical becomes one of their highlighted assets of coming into the program?
For sure, yeah.
I would love, like I said, I would love to see these numbers regarding primary care and medical services increase because I think we're gonna get more mental and behavioral health diagnoses. And we'll be working with a group of clients that are a supported mind and body a little bit more.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of everybody being offered a physical. I would agree, I don't think we wanna, if somebody's adverse to it, I don't know if we wanna force them, but certainly would wanna offer it.
I think we covered a good amount here. Are there any other discussions on the other slides? We good with the data so far?
I'm just curious, what's not on the slides that you can tell us?
Yeah, I did have a quick thing about the exits. So part of the exit form that we have in place, we do collect exit reason. So we know like if the client left by choice or if they were exited because of behavioral issues and what those issues were. So we have that data, but it's, it's just not in a visualization form. But we can.
You've been collecting it, that's great.
Yeah.
And Hannah, was there anything else that you would like to share? Thank you.
I just had a few notes from the discussion. First, I think it is very, very valuable to note if someone just left, if they self-exited, whether that was neutral or positive or negative, right? If they just disappeared for the day and never came back, that's different than if they grabbed their stuff and said, I'm never coming back here again, right? That's a different exit and that's definitely something that we should be tracking and addressing. I just, I wanted to clarify that five is the, just in case we didn't note it, that five is the number of primary care referrals outside of the agency. And 19 is a, is the number of people that received services onsite, which still is low. We're only talking about 25% of people that received services onsite. And that number absolutely can and should be increased. But that is, I just didn't want anyone to see that five.
Where was the, was the 19 just not on here?
Services on the left, is that?
Yeah, I believe Hannah's referring to the 10, number of 10. Red is the housing assistance.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. Yeah, okay, so 10, sorry. No glasses next time. So 10 is services received onsite versus five referred offsite.
Okay, earlier we, it was told that this lower corner portion was services that were received onsite.
Okay, I just wanted.
I'm, I'm sorry, just to confirm, lower right corner?
Lower right is referrals out.
Referrals out and.
And lower left is services onsite. So 10 healthcare, 10 primary care services onsite and five referred outside.
So we had, for example, dental care. We had one dental care that was referred offsite and we had four that were received onsite?
Correct.
What does it look like to receive dental care onsite?
We have the, the Live Well Bus Can Come or VCC. Well, VCC doesn't do, True Care, True Care does dental. And so they can actually bring the services to us.
So my understanding was that it was switched around. So we have a lot of robust services being offered onsite. VI Spada is obviously the top one. And then we're doing a few referrals out. But if we can accomplish most of their needs in-house, that's great. It's gonna be much easier for them to receive the services that they need.
Exactly, and that, definitely those numbers should increase. Everybody should have more access to onsite care. I also wanted to say that when people exit our program, I have personally been a part of a team that has gone out and sought people like, hey, we are going to go scour the streets and see if we can find this person that left. Because we get attached to people and we love them and care about them. And I've, you know, Marcia, we've taken people from the BCNC that knew the person who left and we will go and hunt them down. And we have seen people return from that. And so we don't give up on people just because they leave.
We're finding the lost sheep, right?
Yeah, yeah. And so that's just an important thing. And then we also brought people with us from the BCNC to share their stories. And I wouldn't want us to overlook that. Thank you.
So are we, are we, what, what is the present practice? I'm sorry if this was said and answered already, but are we presently offering a visit with primary care on intake? Are we asking if they're interested in having a medical screening? Are we offering?
Absolutely.
So, so all the people have been offered? So effectively 75% declined that offer?
Or they're just waiting. We, we have onsite services once or twice a month.
I see.
And so.
So there, when we ask them, the services aren't always available for them. And then when the services come, are then people saying, oh, I'm okay today?
Yeah, or perhaps they already are talking to somebody. Our more successful cases are people who are connected to social services already. And so they may already be taking care of that.
They may already have like their, their insurance and primary care. Is, is there anything that you need so that we can have those medical services onsite more? You said once or twice a month?
It is difficult for the big bus to get to us.
What about if we support, you know, are there ways we can support transportation to a facility instead? Then, rather than it coming to us?
Certainly, we, every Thursday, we have a shuttle that comes, picks everybody up and we'll take them to social services or appointments.
Okay. Okay, and then with that shuttle, maybe there can be an emphasis on medical. For the next portion of, of this particular item, I would love to, you know, open it up and hear from members of the Navigation Center. So if that's a surprise that you have for us, then we'd really love to hear some folks' stories.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, welcome.
Good morning, thank you Mayor and Deputy Mayor for letting me come and speak with you. I've been at the center for maybe a month, a little over a month. I've gotten nothing but help from these people. They're very patient, they're very repetitive, they're very kind and very understanding. Everything that I could have needed has been offered multiple times, made available to everybody equally, if not more so than that. Posted on the walls, we have a message board inside the house where they put the calendar, new updates. We have meetings every Thursday where everybody from the house attends so that we could all air any concerns or questions that we have. And the staff has been just more, more than accommodating. So if anything is falling through, I believe it's the whole leading a horse to water and not making them drink kind of premise, you know? But anything that I've ever needed or anybody that I've known at the center has needed has been made available, definitely.
Yeah, thank you for coming to share.
Thank you, and what was your name?
My name's Phaedra.
Phaedra, thank you for coming here today and I'm glad that you're, that you're benefiting from the services. And we want to make sure.
Definitely, I'm very grateful. It's been an experience, it's been rough, but it's been a pleasure being there.
What are, what's your, what are your next steps or prospects? If you want to share.
I currently got my certification to begin working as a behavioral therapist for autistic children.
Congratulations.
So I've been doing that. Had a little bit of a hurdle in that, lost my own personal transportation, but I've still been making it work. Everybody there has been more, like I said, more than accommodating and helping me get my schooling and stuff done. I did my online classes and everything at the shelter, so it is what you make of it.
How did you get referred to the Navigation Center?
Um, I heard about it on, online on my phone. I, I saw the video and everything that was coming out and as well as had some friends and family also tell me about it as well.
Okay, good.
That's great, well, I'm glad that you're here and thank you for sharing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I just wanted to clarify for everybody, really, I just want to say again, the numbers are incredibly impressive compared to other programs. So it's, any of our desire to get at anything that's not working correctly is not, and please don't see it as a, you know, as an assessment that there's anything that's not working as it should. We're aware that the success rates are typically very low. But I know we, all of us want to get to 100% success rate, which is not possible probably, but we're not gonna give up until we get 100%, right? Exactly, so if we can get from 50% success rate to 55%, that's the next goal and then we're gonna get 60 from there and all the way to 100, so. But, but I want to stop and just, again, celebrate. These numbers are tremendous. So, you know, if we can continue to be, what are we, 3X, 4X? The, the other, some of the other providers in the area in terms of positive exits, that's a really big deal.
I completely agree. Thank you for all of the work that you've put into this. It's only possible because of the work that you're doing, but we do want to be successful and we can be successful with good leadership. And I will be here and dedicated to evaluating our programs as well as celebrating our successes. And I think my biggest takeaway from this item is, let's see if a greater emphasis on medical can make a difference in even doing even better than we're already doing. Because there are some folks that are falling through the cracks and I want to make sure we catch them.
I have a confession to make. My doctor text messaged me at the beginning of this meeting and asked me to confirm my physical. I canceled the appointment.
Oh no, you have to go, Mayor.
I'm feeling fine. I, I, I've had three physi, no, maybe four physicals since I've been 18. I just don't like to go to the doctor. And every time I go, they draw my blood and they go, you're perfectly healthy, and I go, thank you for telling me what I already knew. So I just, on behalf of maybe more of the men, we don't really like going to the doctor and I see it's overwhelmingly male, you know, population here. So I just would acknowledge if we've offered and there's some of us who go, I'm doing all right. And maybe, you know, I know what I need to do to get healthier and.
But you know the risks of that, Mayor? We have to encourage you to go to the doctor.
I agree.
I have to encourage my dad to go to the doctor, right?
We should, we should encourage, we should offer, but I would also just acknowledge that there are some people that go, you know, I'm, I'm doing all right and I'm more worried about maybe these. But 100% agree with you, we should encourage, we should re-encourage, especially if people are suffering the effects of chronic homelessness. We know that they're suffering more severe health challenges than the rest of us. So, yeah, your point is well taken. I just want to also acknowledge, you know, we can encourage all we want and, and we should encourage more and more, get to 100%, but there's always gonna be people that decline for their own reasons.
Including the mayor, totally, totally get you, totally get you. Well, hopefully you keep feeling good and everybody else is doing a great job. Thank you, I think that that wraps us up for this item.
I think, oh, we've got maybe one more, please?
Oh, oh, please, yes, thank you.
Hi, good morning, my name is Nicole. I am from Encinitis. I'm originally from Palm Desert. I came here due to certain circumstances where I lost my children. The way that the Navigation Center has helped me and my husband, he was placed at the ranch and he's receiving care for substance abuse. I am a former case manager and LBN and I will be pursuing UCSD case management for a period of 11 weeks. It's a short-term program so that I can get back to work and get re-trained, because I haven't worked for a considerable amount of time. And the way that I have, have been helped is I've had career help, I've had certain services from Nanette. She helped me devise a new resume. I've also been connected to the PASC program, which is through SSI. It's a program that helps retrain. So that's how I'm able to go and help my family. Also Hannah will be going personally with me to go to court to help with some sensitive issues pertaining to my children. And that is all the way in Indio, so it's a long commitment. Also, the ranch is also helping my husband as well with some of his needs. I was initially a referral from the CRC. I was in the Jewish Family Services Program, that's the Safe Parking Program. We were there in our car with our cat for a period of a year. And I did not see that we were getting the assistance that we needed until I was awarded rapid rehousing. So that's for a period of 12 months. And I do foresee like improvement in my life at least so that I can get my children back.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. It sounds like you've overcome so much, and you have the support to continue working towards your goals. And congratulations on your, your career advancements. And, you know, I, I really appreciate you sharing.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too, and thank you, Nicole.
All right, thank you, everyone. That'll take us. If there's no further comments, anything else, gentlemen? Okay, if there's no further comments, we'll move on to our next item, which is regarding proposed monthly dashboards.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm sorry to interrupt quickly. I know that you mentioned before that you wanted to do public comment on the item in the beginning of the item, if you wanted to request public comment.
Do we have public comment on this item?
Would you like to make a public comment?
Please. Is this, um, thank you.
I was inspired by her speaking. I just wanted to emphasize that I, I had previously, before coming here, applied and sought out and been to and gone to several other places and filled out, I don't know how many papers. But being here at Retred, like I said, I've been there maybe a month shortly over that, I just got matched with my permanent housing. So I feel that not only are they offering all those services, but they're motivated as much, if not more so than we are, to help us with that, which has been immensely great. I suffered two strokes. I was previously working security at night. My child is now with his grandmother. But being able to get this personal, permanent housing assistance with the VSPIDA, or however you say it, I'd never heard of it before, prior to them. And that was one of the first things that Pete got going for me, which really helped. So they're, they're doing a lot, and then some for us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional speakers? No? All right. I would love to receive a presentation on our proposed monthly dashboards.
Yeah, thank you again. So this item, of course, is to propose the formatting of monthly dashboards to be provided to City Council as monthly updates. You should have received in your packets, and I trust you've reviewed the dashboards for the Boynton Creek Navigation Center. There should be one for Exodus' outreach program and one for JFS, excuse me, Jewish Family Services Vista Safe Parking Program. So if you'd like, we can go through one at a time. Perhaps the committee would like to provide any feedback they have prepared already for staff to consider.
Yep, let's go through it.
Okay, so we can start with the Boynton Creek Navigation Center, since we've had a good segue from there. All the demogra, uh, excuse me, all the metrics provided in the monthly dashboard are the same ones that Daniel presented previously. Based on the conversation from D1, we will also include negative exits and the reasons and conditions for those exits. We'll also include mental health services, which will be identified separately with better descriptions.
So sorry, Jonathan, I'm, I'm pulling up the dashboard for reference. If it's not in the slides, I think we have it here on our.
Yes, they're in the agenda reports.
So what, can you tell me the title of this one?
Oh, yes, this is Vista Client Demographic Current and Exits. There should also be another one for just exits for Vista.
Okay, so I think here it's, it's the first D2.
Yeah.
Proposed monthly dashboards, similar to what we saw earlier.
Correct.
Okay. Proceed. Thank you. I've got, I think we've got, Mayor and I are on the right slide here, so.
Great. I'll, I'll prepare a present, oh, here we go.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That's correct. Yep, thank you. One more note from D1 to be included with these dashboards will be the count of how many physicals were provided per client, with the assumption that every client will be provided an opportunity to receive a physical.
Is that something that, based on our most recent discussion?
From, yeah, earlier during this meeting.
So this is, you're just, you, you, you used this template to give the report today, right?
Yes, correct. But these numbers that you're seeing, that was provided in the general report, are not accurate numbers. This is just to consider the format.
I see.
So please keep that in mind.
I understand. Looks like, I'm trying to zoom in on my, can you go to the next slide? Uh, maybe keep going. I think we saw these.
Yeah, so the actual numbers presented previously with D1 were drawn from the, this dashboard itself, but this, again, is just for formatting purposes.
One more, oh, I'm looking at the Exodus slide, that's why it looks different. I'm, I'm on the next slide forward. Yeah, that's the one I'm.
And we can, we can visit that next if you'd like, if you'd, would you like to go through each program individually, or should we just go through?
Well, I didn't. I, I was only interested because I didn't see that slide today, but I'm, I, I know why now, because it's Exodus' slide, and we didn't, we didn't hear from them. I, I really appreciate that Retred has been with us every month, and I think them being the crown jewel in our efforts for homelessness, I think that's very important. I'd love to have Exodus and JFS here to report on their programs. Doesn't necessarily have to be every month. Right now, since you're brand new, we love having you every month. But I, I'd like to receive some regular reports from them.
Sure.
So if we could have them in.
Yeah, I definitely advocate for that on the agenda as well.
Yeah, I should note, these dashboards are intended to be sent to council for the review during weekly updates. If you would like, we could bring them to the standing committee meetings, either, or both.
Well, we're, right now, we're reviewing the potential data that's updated on this dashboard. So when you say that what's new here outside of, you know, what is presented, would be services provided, physicals, where would that be indicated?
It's not, so that'll be added since we discussed.
But where will it be indicated?
On this dashboard here.
Under what data set?
That's still to be determined.
Okay.
We can add a separate one included with an existing graph. Yeah, we'll see what I think will make the most sense once we start to compile that data.
Right, because there might be other services we want to see, right?
Yep.
Medical, housing, what was on the previous discussion slides, right? That's maybe a little bit more information than we need. But, you know, do I need to know the number of physicals in a weekly update? Not necessarily.
These will be monthly.
Monthly, in a monthly update? Not even so much, right? My analysis previously about physicals is more programmatic, and at any point, I can ask you, how are the physicals going? It's not something that I necessarily need to see regularly. But I think it's something that should be reviewed by the standing committee. So the data that was provided previously is good. Is it a necessary data point here? What do we need to see? And what do you think, you know, we're advocating for our council members who aren't here today. What do you think they need to see in this data? Whether it's this one, we're going to go over to Exodus next. Obviously, the positive exits, negative exits.
Here's what I would say. There, there's a lot of data here. I definitely would like to have you present it to this committee at our monthly meetings. But maybe it's once a quarter, or maybe it's twice a year, you present this at a council meeting and you walk us through, because I think the verbal walkthrough to go with all of these labels is almost essential to understand what's here.
Yep.
Without it, it's less useful.
Yep.
So.
I mean, I'm seeing eight pets, right? Four, forty-five no, no pets.
Again, yeah, please don't consider the, the metrics themselves just the format of the dashboard. And I should also note.
No, but this is, these are data points that like, they're curious to me, but I don't know if they're essential for, like, it takes time for you to gather this data and update the dashboard, right? What's your process in updating the dashboard?
This dashboard is relatively easy, and the contractors have all already agreed to develop these on a monthly basis based on previous strategic plan update workshops. I think this was requested that we would have monthly dashboards provided. It's a relatively easy process, and all our contractors are already set up to be able to provide this pretty quickly.
Okay, and what I'm just trying to guard against is like, quadruple this amount of data, right? Ask, I, I would never ask for that. I'm fine with information that's here. Unless you include something related to physicals along with the other services.
Sure.
I don't think physicals need to be standalone.
Okay.
Include information on services, that would be great. But specifically on physicals, I would like to see how physicals compare to eye appointments and whatever else you guys are offering.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm good on, I'm good on that slide.
I should also note that the presentation with the.
One moment.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say with the biannual, excuse me, plan update workshops will also be based on this format, so please consider that when you're reviewing these dashboards.
My, my thought is, this is a great starting point. My number one complaint is that every, I think we've been doing six-month updates in the past, and we upped them to quarterly. My number one complaint has been that it's always a brand-new presentation. It's graphically completely new. It's got completely different data labels, and it's always apples to oranges. There's never a consistent theme. So the fact that we are now at a place where we say, this is what it's going to look like, and we're going to present it frequently enough on a monthly basis, that somebody's always, this is a flame that has to keep burning. And the problem is, on a six-month basis, especially with the turnover at Exodus, the flame would get blown out, and in five months would go by, and somebody'd be like, I guess we got to figure out how to report, and they come up with something completely new again. So this is, and then what I would think is, we're going to continue to dream up things to have you add to this. If there is some piece of data here that is particularly onerous to report or to collect, and you wonder whether or not we're really interested in it, and you want to say to us, hey, it takes a lot of time to inventory this piece of information. If there's things that I would, I would think you could recommend things that you think are difficult or time-consuming or tedious, that are, that you believe are not of value. And, and ask us, is it okay if we eliminate the reports on pets? Because we think it's, you know, although I still kind of think it's interesting because it's one of the things we talk about a lot as being a barrier. So not on that specific thing, but, you know, I don't know. If there's things that pop up in your data work and you feel like, jeez, I really wish we didn't have to report on this, because I don't even think they care about it, let us know, and, you know, we'll just take it out.
And I'll add to that by saying, you know, it was offered for us to see information on physicals. So let's provide some guide rails here. I think the biggest piece of data that's missing in this, these slides is related to services provided. So what information about services provided? I think what's on previous slides and information is a little bit, a little bit excessive. Is, are there services provided?
It's not on this dashboard, we'll make sure it's included. It'll look just like the one that was discussed with D1.
Okay, so this one that was in D1 will just be retrofitted.
You can transplant it right on there, yep.
It's a lot of information, but I think it's good. And I would definitely rather see it like this. And the only change that I would add is not to specifically parse out physicals, but really differentiate between, and maybe it is physicals. Maybe it is physicals, but also I think that there's a difference between primary care services, right? And some of the other referrals that you do. So if, if this information is going to be included, and it's just not in front of us for this D2 item, then that's good with me. All right, we can go to the next dashboard.
I have, I'm just have one more random thought jumping in here. Particularly important are going to be the, the Encinitas exits. I want to know, maybe, I'm the only one on the council that wants to know, but I know the community wants to know. Are people being brought here from Encinitas who are then walking away from the facility and becoming homeless on the streets of Vista? And therefore, are we, by partnering with Encinitas, are we inviting more people to live on the streets of Vista? That's a big concern for the community, and so I'd like to make sure that to the greatest degree possible, we're tracking that. I like to make sure that, you know, people that are brought here from Encinitas know that they have a way to get back to Encinitas if they want to leave. Hey, if, whenever, if, if you don't want to work the program, if you want to leave, we will take you back to the, you know, to the community that we brought you here from, and make sure that that's offered, because presumably, they're returning to what I will underscore is, and I call it the destructive community. They, they build and form communities on the streets, but unfortunately, they're destructive to their health and welfare interests, which is why we need to get them off the street and into a, a healing community. But still, they may be returning to a community, and I don't think it's in their best interest, or the best interest of our city, to let them walk away from the Navigation Center into the streets of Vista to find a place to, to habitate on the side of the road. So I'd like to know as much as possible about really all the exits. You know, but particularly, and this is where Exodus needs to, or whoever's doing our outreach, needs to really be able to visually, you know, recognize somebody onsite and go, we know who this person is, we know, you know? And that's where, as, as service providers who are inside the curtain of, you know, PII, they should, you know, they should have a Facebook with pictures of people that have been exited and names so that they know who these folks are if they encounter them, and they can kind of give us that information. So.
You think you're the only member of the council that has an interest in that question? That's an interesting position to take.
I said, I'm, I said I might be, I didn't say I was. I, I.
Roll the tape.
If, if I.
I think it's an interesting question, and with what we saw from the exits, the data, people are exiting, and some of those members are from Encinitas. And they're exiting, and they're leaving, and we might not even know why they're leaving. But they're exiting, and they're leaving the property, and they're stepping foot onto the county. And then they're maybe going to San Marcos, maybe they're going into Vista, maybe they're going back home to Encinitas. We don't know where people end up, so I think that's an interesting question.
I did not mean to characterize you or any other member of the council's.
I know it's something you care about.
I, I, I know there are some people who have made very clear that they don't think it's, I'm not saying you're the person, but I've had, you know, the Exodus people have made these things very clear that they don't think it's important, and they don't think it's my business. So.
We should be collecting data on it.
I totally agree. I'm just saying, there, I don't understand the motives. As I've made clear to all of you in this room, there are some people whose motives I don't understand, and they seem to be very at odds with the community's motives. And I take those people to task. But I have had people be very pointed in telling me that, you know, they don't care, they don't want to tell me, or they don't think it's my business to know these things.
Well, this is where like the, you know, discussion about these dashboards and the information that we're getting is one thing, but it's not necessarily reflecting information from the whole continuum of care, because, you know, let's say we have this information from folks who are in our services, and then they go off, and, and what's their next instance of care, right? I wonder if there's any kind of chronological information we can get from, you know, from our documentation, right, to find out where people are going at what time? And even from the regional task force, right? Can we get, you know, chronological data about where are people at what stage? You know, were they in Vista in March, and then they stayed in Vista? And they, but they came from Encinitas in February, right? I don't know where, where people are going. I think that would be interesting data to have, probably difficult data to get, but interesting data to have.
You know, eventually, most of the people who are suffering with chronic homelessness, especially if they have once come into the care of a service provider, the, I would say statistically, prob, the probability that they're going to come back into clarity or back into the care of a service provider is probably pretty decent, probably pretty high. So we might not know three weeks from now what happened to the person who self-exited, but probably three months from now, or a year from now, we're going to.
The information's probably there.
Well, it's, like I say, especially in the long run.
But it's probably not organized.
It's, and the, I don't know how to organize that information. It's really narrative. But here's the thing, we're only dealing with so far eighty-three people. We, we've got eighty-eight people who are marked as, in our point-in-time count. You know, we don't know, maybe we have three hundred, four hundred people in Vista that cycle through chronic homelessness, but I can read the narratives for four hundred individuals. Again, I don't need their personally identifiable information. I don't need a name on it, you know? But if I can read enough narrative, you know, this person came from Riverside County, and then, you know, they. And then, you know, they. You can anonymize this data and yes, it takes some time to do it, but how can we understand what's going on? If we can't understand sort of these people's pathway into homelessness, their pathway, how they got to the shelter. And then their pathway out of it, whether it was successful or not. The ones who stayed housed, who continue a year later to be successful, we need to know that too. The ones who a year later are no longer successfully housed, we need to know that. And we, and, and the granular information is so important, even if it's anonymized. Because we have to start to figure out what are the trends and patterns that are causing people to fall back into homelessness? If they, we got them into a program, they're in the program for 12 months and then they drop out, they're back on the street. Like we gotta, what's going on with this person? Who, who is doing that work? None of you are doing that work. Nobody I know is doing that work. You couldn't introduce me or give me the name right now of any person you know who's doing that work. Because we haven't made the data available. And, and I just have to ask the obvious question, like, do we actually want to solve the problem of homelessness? Cause I think if we did, that we would start to provide that information to, to, to somebody who is a, you know, a credentialed researcher. Yeah, this is one of the things I'm starting to say routinely is like, we need to have, uh, news reporters who are credentialed. We need to have academics who are credentialed. We need to provide a credentialing system where we provide some greater level of access to information, which is not covered under the HIPAA law. But I'm not saying, I'm not even saying give it to me. I'm not even saying give it. I'm, I'm not saying give it to everybody in the public, but there ought to be a way for credentialed researchers and reporters. To look at what's going on here and have a better understanding. The intentional wall of opacity, uh, is the problem. And this is why, you know, the state auditor came out and said $24 billion can't be accounted for. You know, we're, I don't know, I go on and on and on myself.
You know, I think that there's, um, a lot of gaps in the data and, and outside of people voluntarily entering into programs. And us being able to map that chronologically. You're in Encinitas, then you went to San Marcos, then you went to Escondido, then you went to Vista. And, you know, now you've stayed in Vista, but who knows where you're really from? Would you be in support of, of physically tagging or marking people?
What? Physically tagging or marking people?
How, is, is that like, how do we, are you indicating that we want to track people?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
As an individuals, but as, as programs?
I mean, I think we're all tagged by our name. We all have a name.
Well, that's the identifiable information.
Well, I.
I wouldn't want to disclose.
Well, I, I think, uh, we have all of the identifiable information. It's in clarity. We need a way to be able to occasionally export data out of clarity. Which by the way, if you talk to Los Angeles county, if you talk to most of the other counties. Most of the other counties provide a much greater level of transparency for their, uh, you know, coordinated entry system. It's, uh, I've, I've discovered through my research and conversations. That basically HUD has created the, uh, the whole system, like RTFH did not, well, you know. We had the conversation with Tamara and I don't remember if it was said in that meeting, but. RTFH in San Diego did not create this database. It's like a HUD system. So they're using the same database all over the country. But some, uh, continuums of care. Not ours, but some others have chosen to make this data. And I'm told and understand that in Los Angeles county, they're more transparent with this information. And this was the kind of our last committee meeting. We could choose to make some of this information available and yes, it would take time. And, but again, it, we're right back to this discussion about, oh, it would take time and money to make the, uh, data available. And to, and to anonymize it sufficiently to not compromise personally identifiable information. But then we go back to, okay, $24 billion up in smoke, we can't account for it. We have to take the time to know what we're doing and know if it's working. We have to take the time to have data, uh, scientists who are embedded in every program so that we can be accountable. We have to be able to answer these questions. And right now, the homelessness industrial complex does not want to either spend the time or spend the money. Or be held accountable by having embedded data scientists. But I just feel like if we really want to solve the problem, I know I'm super philosophical, 100,000 foot level here, but.
That's the, the value of the, the committee, right? We can have these like big picture conversations and privacy is really important to me. If we're able to conduct, uh, an organization of data. That allow us to see more insight into the situation that without violating privacy, that's really important to me. I don't believe in tracking people. I, I think that there's a lot of, um, uh, issues with that. And so are there other ways we can get information without tracking people?
I want to super clarify that when I'm saying track somebody, I'm saying make a list of our different, uh, encounters with them. I am not talking about putting any physical device in their body or number or, or following them around like with surveillance or GPS or anything like that. Is the farthest thing from what I'm, uh, referring to. I'm talking about. Yeah, I'm talking about having a list, uh, on paper or on, on computer of our, interact, or of our conversations with that person.
Enrollment and programs.
Yeah, and, and by, I'm talking about tracking our, our, our contacts with them. Totally different sense, uh, of the word than like, uh, you know, physical big brother tracking.
I got you. Clarification from staff, when we're talking about these dashboards, I know that we're going to be receiving them. Are they on the city website? Are they available? Can the press see this? Cause I want us to be transparent.
Staff is open to committee's direction to do so.
Do, do we want to make these available to the public at any point?
It's a public document. These are already available to the public. Matter of whether or not we're publishing them on the website or not, which yeah, I don't see why not. The, these are, uh, as these are, um, shared with us. Are they not, uh, made available by the clerk's office, uh, on the, uh, on Granicus?
Yeah, I mean, the agenda packet is available.
What about the presentations?
Yeah, they get added to the packet after. But if you want, I mean, I don't know how these are normally distributed.
Do you think there's any value?
If you wanted to do it, you could put on the website.
Website maybe? Do you think there's any value to that?
Well, but, but it, what, what you're saying is that it is on the website after the meeting. Yes?
If it's presented, if it's given to you at the meeting, yes.
Like this particular presentation, which is the first instance of using this. Would, is this, is this already available on Granicus?
No, it will be after the meeting.
Okay.
It'll be part of the agenda packet.
I think that's good.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I don't want to task the clerk's office to do anything more than that. Are we on, are we on Zoom with this meeting? Yeah, okay, so we're on Zoom, so people can see this on Zoom.
And the slides are showing now.
As soon as we see it, they're gonna see it. And then anybody that wants to get it within, usually within one business day, it's going to be online?
Yes.
Okay, so very soon after, they'll be able to download a PDF. But if they're on Zoom, they can take, you know, they can see it. And then 24 hours later, they can have it on download and have a PDF copy of it. So I think that's quite. I got the survey today from the city of Vista about the website. Was that from your office? And I, I completed it. I don't know if you got it. The city sent out a survey about the website.
Maybe our communications team.
Yes, and, uh, and, and so I took advantage of the opportunity to complete that survey because I like to see what our residents are seeing. And you know, one of the pieces of feedback I gave is like, we probably need to do a bit of a, uh, a periodic cleanup on our file tree in Granicus. Like the fact that we still have a city council folder under agendas. You click in there and it's like, just kidding, it's only city councils through like 1992. Then you have to go to consolidated to get, it's very confusing. Like we need to relabel that after all these years. The city council folder should have the current city, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's kind of a little bit of a trickery. I still, I still sometimes go to that. I'm like, oh, yeah, gotta go find the consolidated folder. Like nobody would know that, just looking at the labels. So, and, and particularly, uh, I didn't get a printed copy of this morning's agenda. And so I went on Granicus to load it. And, um, I found the, uh, I found the items under current, uh, meetings. But the agenda, I don't know where to go to find that for this, for this meeting. Do you know where it would be in Granicus?
Yeah, well, it's on the public notice, but it should be, um, one of the items that's, um, in that same current meeting folder.
You know what? You're right. It, it is right here. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's good. So it's, it's there. That's.
I've, I've found confusion with accessing the pu, public records. So I feel, I feel like this is relevant to the discussion about the, um, dashboard. Because sometimes with the, um, meeting documents, they can be hard to sift through. I don't know if that means that we should, you know, create a separate page on our website for this. Uh, we would still have to, um, update the documents with the clerk's office, right? As is required, uh, but they can be hard to find, you know, different, uh. Documents and items on the city website can be hard to find and, um. Transparency means it's, it's laid out in front of you.
Right.
And rather than, you know, sifting through it, you know, just as a expression of good faith and transparency. Like I'm not opposed to putting this on the city website under housing and homelessness services.
I would recommend just that I can offer to have these posted on the housing and homeless services webpage specifically. As well as provided with the public meeting documents.
Cause people might be looking for housing stuff and not think to look in the meeting docs.
If I may, um, briefly, um, our communications team is currently working on upgrading the website as we speak.
So I should fill out that survey too.
That would be wonderful. Yes, we will be having more options and more, um, it, it'll look different.
So, you know, I asked the city to, uh, reserve city of Vista dot, or I think it's now it's Vista.gov slash homelessness. For the page referring to our homelessness strategic plan. So that we would have like one easy URL to give people to go to. But I'm still not sure that that many people are visiting that page. I mean, my guess would be a few hundred people have visited it. I'd love to know some of, I mean, we have those stats. I'd love to know what they are.
We do have those stats.
My only concern of this is I would sooner ask our, uh, our public affairs staff to post this to Facebook or Instagram. Than I would to update the website every month. Because it probably takes the same amount of time and there's literally probably three people are going to see it. I, I doubt it's more than 10 because I don't think that many people are actively going to the homelessness page. I don't know how many visitors we get every month. Let's take a look at that. Maybe we get more if we put the, maybe we put this on there and we put a link out.
I, I agree with sharing it on, you know, what, what are the platforms that people are using to get their information? Sometimes it's the city website, you know, we post news and stuff. But a lot of times it's going to be social media and even the, you know, the press, you know, there's no reason why we can't like release this formally to the press.
Absolutely. Um, I, I would say though, uh, let's not do it monthly. Let's make it available as it is now publicly monthly. I just don't want to overwhelm people with so much information that they begin to tune it out. And I think if we were to release it, honestly, probably if we, if we were to make an effort to publicize it twice a year. I think that would get maximum attention, whereas even quarterly, I think it's just going to become noise.
I will say though, that we have, um, you know, if we do have stuff on the website, we want it to be relevant information. So we have addressing homelessness, right? Like the, the link that you, uh, said. And there's a different categories with different links. So there's by the numbers. And the data sets for that are, um, most recent data on how the city of this is addressing homelessness with shelter, support and housing. And these are just not, uh, these are not current, right? I feel like the data we have in front of us would be better for what's currently on the website. There's also response plan, which that should be, um. This is from last updated, the, the image here is referencing a timeline between March 2018 and September 2022. So that needs to be updated as well. And then, um. But updating these, you know, we, should we be updating them beyond 2022? Yes. Do we need to update it weekly? No.
I should note that those numbers by the numbers are updated with each plan update workshop, which is twice a year. And is just as the vice chair suggested, so perhaps we can continue that or if the committee has a different direction.
These are updated twice a year and these numbers are from 2022?
So if you recall with the workshops, they go from March to September and October to March. So that by the time we come to the plan workshop with the preparation from staff for the presentation. Data we have, the most current data we have will be through March, for example, when we present in June.
But we're in 2024.
Regardless of the year, right? So it's every six month, every year. So for example, on June 6th, when we have our next plan update, it'll cover data from October 2023 through March 2024. The analysis and the presentation is prepared.
What I should be seeing here is. March 2023. Or no, I should see, I should at least see March, uh, 2024 on here.
That will be updated with the next plan update. So you'll notice it's September 2023, which will have been in the data set presented with the last workshop in December.
I will just add a correction that it's September 2022.
Okay, then, yeah, that.
I, I believe that there are maybe items here that aren't updated. And, um, as the standing committee provides direction for what is the most relevant information. To not only, uh, make publicly available, but. We are of course forming the framework for our strategic plan, which we'll be discussing as a whole council. So this information, I can see it having a place on the city website. Maybe there's other data sets that are on the city website that are just like not current. This would probably be the most current information. I do agree with what the mayor said before about, um, making it uniform. It, it can be difficult to kind of see different data again and again. And like different labels and, and what we've noticed before. So I would be hesitant to make any grand updates to the website until we've really secured. That these are the data sets that we're going to be working with. So that's what my recommendation would be. Let's update the, um, city website to be current. Because I think that there's information on there that's not current. But I wouldn't necessarily press to have this information available right now. Until staff feels like it's, it's adequately uni, uh, uniform, right? And it's going to stay that way for, um, you know, a significant. You know, keep that standard for the long term.
Yeah, and that's exactly the intention of these proposed dashboards. For committee members to direct staff to recognize a set data set. Um, I will note though, of course, with our outreach entering its fourth year, the program has evolved over time. So sometimes we'll have information presented in a newer update that wasn't available previously because it wasn't collected. So for example, housing navigation wasn't added until the third year of the outreach program. So adding those data sets wasn't just a matter of inconsistency, but just that those programs weren't available previously. But this dashboard here specifically is for our outreach program with access recovery. If the committee would like to take a look and direct staff to offer any adjustments. And then we can finalize this draft and prepare the plan update with this set of data.
Okay, so kind of moving on to the Exodus, um, dashboard. If, if you folks have, um, kind of any guiding comments on this. But from looking at it, mayor, are there any things you want to see from our outreach that's not included in the data?
So when we see referral source here, this is how they were referred to Exodus?
Correct. And if you'd like, I can just quickly go over each one of these, perhaps that'll be helpful?
Sure.
Sure, okay, so the first one, unduplicated clients served during date range. Of course, this will be the in total, the total number of clients engaged and enrolled with outreach. A subset of that data, of course, is new to Exodus, meaning we had 21, for example, in this month. 21 new referrals to Exodus within March 2024, with 184 moving forward from previous engagements. The referral source, as we just mentioned, um, is the source of the referral to Exodus. We have very basic demographic information, so age range, gender, we have race, ethnicity. We have how many identified veterans? We're kind of moving in a clock, clockwise manner, if you will. We have shelter referrals provided, so which shelters Exodus have referred clients to. You'll see the majority of them, of course, are to the BCNC. We have housing status as of the last date of this range, which is the last day of March. The distribution, and then we have a subset of data for other types of housing as specified in the pie graph to the right of that. There's quite a few, I think, uh, data points there if you'd like to take the time to review that. And then of course, location at first contact, you'll see kind of in the middle towards the left. This is separated by primarily the program that they were engaged with. So you'll see the HOSI and the BPOs, of course, is ERF1 and potentially ERF3 if a. So you'll see the HSC and the BPOs, of course, is ERF1 and potentially ERF3 if awarded. You'll see whether it's on private property, public property, which may include county or other public properties like state right of way. And then last but not least, in the very kind of center there, you'll have the referrals provided. So which services were referred out to from Exodus?
I have a suggestion, I think, Mayor.
Please.
I believe from our conversations, you would appreciate this. Can we see information about, maybe it's, I don't know how the data would be collected, so let's talk through this. I would like to see how many encounters it takes to like provide the service. How many encounters before a linkage is formally conducted? Or how many encounters before enrollment occurs? I mean, there's at least one.
Yeah.
You have to have the one encounter, right? But we know there's probably maybe 10, maybe four, right?
Yeah.
How would we collect that?
So I can certainly bring that up with Exodus. One consideration that I have is that with each engagement with an individual, it may be difficult to identify them as the same individual in a subsequent engagement. So if they're not agreeing to receiving services, they might not be tracking their name or any other personal identifiable, identifiable information. So we wouldn't be able to go back and say, oh, we've already engaged with Gregory or Daniel or Jonathan. It would just be.
This is the problem. We can't see how effective the program is. I understand that it takes multiple encounters and without identifying information, there's no way to categorize.
I might recommend perhaps we can, if as clients are enrolling for services, we can ask them to report to Exodus how many times they've engaged previously. But I will say that's not an issue that's unique to Exodus or Vista programs. Of course, that's something that, as you can imagine, is probably an issue with most outreach programs if they're not engaging with them.
The way that it might be organized is, so there's like a, a line that says, okay, one encounter, right? How many clients needed one encounter to receive the services? And then there's two to four. How many clients needed two to four encounters before they received services? And then there's, you know, five to 10, right? How many, you know, clients? And I would be hopeful that the majority of clients need just one encounter to receive the services, right? That would be the, you know, the thing that we're really working towards. But I don't even know what the status of that is, how many encounters are needed. And I think that that's a level of accountability that I don't know if I can feel very confident would be even available to us right now.
Yeah, I don't know that we would either. I should also say, so when we say receiving services, there's a few different, I guess, thresholds we might consider. If you recall from the last plan update, we talked about how many engagements until somebody accepted shelter? So that's maybe one metric we can present. As far as enrolling for services, that could be another one we can consider as a separate threshold. And anything else the committee might want to consider, maybe it's just.
And that information about, you know, you're enrolled in Exodus and you're being offered shelter, right? We don't have those numbers on this chart or on a, on a previous.
We have the shelter referrals provided.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's getting closer. But it's not quite getting to the information that I want. But I understand, if you could, my direction would be to speak with Exodus about what they can collect.
Regarding how many engagements before enrolling?
Engagements before enrolling and even regarding our shelter, having that conversation too.
Yeah. I will say too, there are some services and referrals provided, even if they don't consent to enroll for full services. So Housing Navigation, of course, will not be provided without proper enrollment, but we may offer shelter without full enrollment.
Like enrollment in the Exodus program.
Yeah, so it's just their consent from the client.
Yeah. Once, how many encounters before they get consent to enroll?
Just a quick word. I think this discussion may change when we put out, when we create our new outreach contracts. One of the things I was thinking about is when I, when I was operating an outreach team, we utilized HMIS or CLARITY differently than the way Exodus does. And if, if we, and we do plan on putting this in our next contract, that service providers have to follow San Diego County rules for documenting and providing outreach, that we can document the amount of interactions with somebody prior to. Let me take a step back. We, we classify people as enrolled and engaged. Enrollment is just putting somebody into the program. It just identifies that you have met the person within your geographical realm and they qualify for your program. So whether they want to be in your program or not, I as an outreach worker, I'm secretly going to enter any information I have about you to keep track of services provided. If at some point they want to actually start engaging in services and that person's engaged. So that would mean that they're receiving the full scope of services.
And they've like consented, they've signed forms.
Yeah, so I think, I feel strongly that when we have our new outreach contract, tracking these numbers will be.
So these standards that I'm asking for are implemented elsewhere?
We can extrapolate the data from ways that we're already tracking data in CLARITY.
Okay, because there are more efficient ways to utilize CLARITY?
Yes, so in CLARITY, for example, anytime I interact with an individual, we're going to do something called a current living situation. It's just a quick where they slept the night before. It, I don't, actually, I think they now include a geo, a geomap that we also have to kind of drop it. In the past, it just used to be a description. Now they're actually putting a geolocation. We're also going to write a case note, so it'll be a case note documenting what was done on that interaction. And then also, just like we have with the British Navigation Center, we're going to document any services or referrals that are made during that interaction. So between those three data sources, we should be able to come up with something.
Okay, thank you. We can proceed.
I mean, I don't know how lengthy the conversation is, but I'm, I'm interested. Maybe at our next meeting, we could, you could tell us the difference between the current methodology and the, you said it was the San Diego County approved methodology. Is that lengthy or is that something we should talk about at the next meeting?
Understanding what's, I, I don't, at this time, I, I think Jonathan has a better understanding of the current operations of Exodus and how they're documenting. I really don't have a full understanding of how they're.
I think we could have quite a bit of discussion about that. Maybe we could talk about that at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think we could have an item on Exodus and the use of CLARITY or on a outreach contract. And the, let's, let's our standing committee discuss an outreach contract before it goes to the full council.
Yeah, if I may, I might propose that at the next standing committee meeting, staff provide a presentation on the community standards that Daniel's referencing. There is a manual that we can review.
And what's the status of our contract with Exodus? I know that we're, we're coming close to a timeframe. What are the dates specifically?
So ERF1 outreach contract has already expired. We're still working on the PLHA contract, which expires at the end of September.
Got you.
Yep.
So my, my thoughts in general on these dashboards are, these are a good place to start. I don't know that we're going to be able to figure all of the issues out. My biggest issue is that we don't have a complete change in the graphical appearance. Or, and that we, you know, my biggest concern is we continue to use the same framework over and over again. With making, when we agree as a council or a committee, when we agree that the label is not accurate enough or clear enough, we go ahead and update that and then stick with that from there forward. But I think, you know, this needs to be a, a thing that, you know, we continue to invest in this, you know, particular report. So this is, this looks like a good place to start. I know I'm going to have more questions in the future. The questions come to me better when we're actually walking through real data than when I'm looking at the sample data. But, but for today's purposes, I think this is the right start. And I'm looking forward to seeing all the accurate data plugged in. And, and then, you know, growing and modifying this in the future.
Very good.
I agree. Steph? If I could make a specific recommendation for the data, we see it in the Point of Creek Navigation Center data, the total clients served. That can be surmised from the Exodus data, but it's not clearly visible, right? It would be nice to have a number labeled total clients served. And then specifically for the safe parking, there's no way to surmise how many total clients serve. It's just the client served with, in a particular timeframe. But from the program's inception, I would like to know for a safe parking program, how many clients have been served?
And for the outreach as well.
For outreach, yeah.
Since inception, okay, very good.
And I'm scooting ahead and looking at the Jewish Family Service, this is safe parking program, right? We see a date range. We see the total individuals enrolled, but not the total clients served throughout the lifespan, which would include this number. If you want to give us an overview otherwise of what's here, that would be great.
Yeah, so with the safe parking, as the chair mentioned, we have total individuals served as of the ending, the last day of the period, which is 29. Total households, which is how many vehicles. Of course, with each vehicle, we could have multiple individuals, which is why you see a higher number of individuals versus households. Which of course households and vehicles in this case are interchangeable. Total individuals served versus enrolled, you'll notice that that allows us to calculate a utilization rate. Total households served, so again, the same comparison above. Previously exited programs that have re-enrolled, this is similar to the request that the committee members have for the BCNC in measuring how many clients have re-enrolled in the program that have previously exited. And then the pie chart next to that, unduplicated individuals enrolled by date range, that's represented as a pie chart. And then zip code prior to enrollment, meaning that this is going to measure where the individuals enrolled with the program are coming from, whether they're in Vista, North County, or elsewhere in the county. And then of course, the exit data below that as a bar graph. Individuals exited, again as a bar graph. Nightly occupancy, again, this is the utilization. And then average number of days to positive exit, you'll see right next to that, average nightly occupancy and then the calculated utilization rate.
What is the difference between previously exited participants that have re-enrolled and previously exited Vista participants that have re-enrolled?
Just noting the difference between Vista residents who are engaged in Vista to the program who have re-enrolled.
So that is going to the pie chart over here, zip code prior to enrollment. And it's referring to Vista versus North County versus other.
Versus countywide, yep.
And this is where I would call upon our other cities. Every single city should have a safe parking program for their residents. And we are accommodating the majority of our enrollment, at least in this month of March, for people who are within North County but not within Vista. I know that there's people sleeping on their, in their cars in residential neighborhoods in Escondido. I know that they're sleeping in their cars in residential neighborhoods in Oceanside. And those folks absolutely need to be able to access something within their city. So our program's going very well. It's brought calm and safety to the neighborhood. We are using public facilities to have the, the program. Every city can do this, so we're doing a good job. And I want to just call upon my other cities and provoke them to do more. I'm good on this slide, otherwise I just need to see a number that says total served.
So the total served, is that the number of people that, how is that number less than the number of individuals enrolled? Are these real data or are these sample data?
This is sample data, but this at one point was based on real data. Could you repeat the question?
Well, the total individuals served is less than total individuals enrolled. What does individual served mean?
So served would be those that actually utilize the lot. So we do have individuals that are enrolled with the program that don't return every night.
Oh, I see.
Which is why we also calculate utilization rate. And if the committee might recall, there was an update that we are over enrolling for the program now to better utilize the available spaces.
Now I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Looks good.
It's good for me.
Thank you. I'd also like to confirm what the methodology for these updates should be, whether that's for the weekly update or with the standing committee only, or perhaps via email or webpage or a combination of those.
Backtracking a little bit, I don't see successful exits. What I'm looking at is so tiny and I, I can't.
We'll, we'll have a better format for this.
It's blurry here and it's so tiny here, I can't hardly read it. But, so if it's in front of me and I can't read it in the small detail, it's like six-point font here on my screen.
It's towards the center to the right, total individuals exited. You have positive exits and negative exits represented as a bar graph.
So does it say on here how many people were exited to permanent housing?
I'm not seeing that either.
It's only, so we, it does, so you'll see there's one, so positive exit.
I can read the labels. You have positive exit, permanent housing one.
It is very small, so apologize for that.
Unknown one, negative exit three. These are households and this is by individual.
Ah, okay, I see.
All right, okay, so it is there. It's just when they make.
Very small three, yeah.
When they make their slide, they should make it landscape, that way we can see.
We'll move these around so it's more legible format.
Great.
Yep. Excellent.
All right, anything else on this item?
Yeah, just to confirm the method of the update to be presented to either a combination of the council or the committee. Whether it's digitally, perhaps you'd like an email, perhaps you'd like it included with a weekly update.
How often would you like to see updates on this data?
You know, we don't, I, I'd like to see this information when we, I'd like to have all these slides every month here. We don't have to spend an hour talking about them. We can just receive them and if we have questions, we can just move through them really quickly.
I think they can be included under number four, which is general homelessness updates. For every standing committee meeting, it could be included in our packet, so we can speak on it. But I would not expect staff to present updates on the data unless there's something remarkable, right? If there's some sort of update you feel like is relevant. But definitely include that in the publicly posted agenda once a month.
And then staff will rely on the committee members to provide feedback during general homelessness. Okay, very good.
And then the onus will be on us to take a look at it and evaluate it month to month.
Okay, then I'll just ask if staff would print out a paper copy of that for our committee meetings?
Yeah, I think that that would be.
That would be helpful.
Very helpful.
Just in case I can't get it.
In case it's blurry.
We're, for, for the two people watching at home, we're experimenting with not killing trees every meeting.
I have a hard time with the iPad because I'm a very tactile person. I like to take notes. So sometimes I still need to get my items printed so I can really write over it. If we're good on D2, we'll move on to D3, which is the glossary of terms. Speaking of those two people who may be attending by Zoom, I forgot to mention that if you are participating via Zoom and you would like to speak, you can press nine or you can also, if you're here, which we have no one here, you can submit a request to speak card. So let's go ahead and get this update on the glossary of terms.
So I believe since the last time we presented the glossary of terms, we've added a couple of updates specifically in regards to the discussion about illegal camping. So we have the definition of camping, which comes from the Vista Municipal Code. We have also.
And I'll add quickly too, so our definition of camping, as Daniel mentioned, came from our local definition found in Vista Municipal Code. Section 9.20.020, which is, we had a typo on the one provided publicly, that's been updated. So the section of the Vista Municipal Code that was quoted is 9.20.020.
We've also updated the term encampment to include definitions provided by legal counsel. The statement at the end, encampments include any camp paraphernalia and personal property associated with or located in or around the structures or tents, or a group of individuals that habitually sleep with or without shelter structures in a public or private space. So I believe the addition is pretty much defining that an encampment doesn't have to be with property. It can be an individual or individuals just sleeping in an area.
Not contingent on structures.
So if they have a propane heater, that can be considered, you're making an encampment?
But no propane heater is needed. They can just be lying down without that. Also, I did update a continuum of care or COC. I mistakenly, sorry, it's RTFH. RTFH provides the HMI system for Imperial County, but they are not the continuum of care for the Imperial Valley. So Regional Task Force is just responsible for San Diego County.
Those are all the updates since the last glossary.
Very good. I don't have any other questions on this item.
Oh, for you, for Vice Chair, we did include the complete definition of homelessness, including categories one through four. So you'll find on the back page at the very end, it includes all definitions of homelessness as provided by HUD. Now, there are other standards, I believe, provided by school districts, but we are, we strictly follow HUD standards.
Okay, there we go, definitions of homelessness, literally homeless.
I'm glad you're separating this from some of the other terms.
I have to admit, I was looking at living in a place not meant for human habitation and wondering, I was wondering like, if, if I'm sleeping on somebody's couch, but a couch isn't made to sleep on. So I'm, I'm on a couch, I'm in somebody's living room, they're not asking me to leave, so I have an indefinite accommodation, but it's on a couch, which is not meant to sleep. Does that mean I'm living in a place not meant for human habitation?
Well, I would, I would say, I'm sure staff can speak on this. My understanding is that that would be still considered a habitable location.
They are still considered, if you're couch surfing, it is still considered homeless in the definition of certain programs. So you will still be considered homeless and eligible for, for example, rapid rehousing programs if you are couch surfing. But I don't know that that's defined as a place not meant for human habitation if you are indoors. But we can verify that.
So generally, so generally speaking, not meant for human habitation is generally going to be outdoors.
Outdoor and sheltered, right.
Yeah, maybe if you lived in a garage or an unfinished, un-air-conditioned, un-heated space, that would be not meant for human habitation, right? Like if you're in a storage unit.
I think we can always also reference like California Health and Safety Code related to requirements for tenants, for example, as like, if you build a shack and, okay, you're like, you got a futon in there and everything, and it's just completely unregulated, it's, it wouldn't pass any of those health and safety codes, right? Versus if you don't have an ideal bed, or you don't have, you know, a king-size bed, right? You're sleeping on a couch. The programs that you might be eligible for are kind of, you know, outside of this list. But under the definition of literally homeless, I, I don't think that that would quite meet the occasion. I, I always, you know, I got a remark on the category four of fleeing, attempting to flee domestic violence. So you kind of could be in a situation where you have a home, but you're in a hostile situation. And you've attempted to flee, but maybe you find yourself back in that situation where the interest in removing yourself from the abuser could be seen as a status of homelessness. I mean, I've had so many, you know, seen so many instances in my family and my community where it's hard to part with someone in a domestic violence situation. So, you know, it's not really speaking to the structure of where they're sleeping. It's more the conditions of their home and their family. So that one's interesting.
And, and I, and my question was actually jumping back to the dashboards and BCNC and where people have been referred from. But it was also sort of a definitional question, so I thought it was appropriate to ask here. But yes, I'm glad that the status of attempting or fleeing domestic violence is and should be called out as a homelessness status.
I wanted to ask about encampment. So I know when we had the encampment discussion, myself and other members of the council expressed a concern about people being able to rest and sleep and nap in the parks and in nature, being, you know, that being addressed as something that's like a homelessness issue. I, I think that there's kind of this question of, is a blanket on, on the ground an encampment? This is referring to a structure, right? But it also says not intended for long-term continuous occupancy, including tents that are used to shelter one or more persons and their belongings. So does it really have to be almost like a covering? Because sometimes there's, there's folks that are just sleeping on the ground, and they, maybe they're not homeless, okay? And maybe they're just sleeping on the ground, taking a nap in the park. And then there are definitely folks that are more visibly homeless, and they're sleeping on the ground, or they have kind of like a, you know, a settlement on the ground, but they don't have any structure above them. So how would this definition address kind of those things?
I may be able to speak to this.
Defer to, yep.
Madam Chair, so the definition is kind of brewed, it's supposed to be construed liberally, but also construed as a totality of the circumstances. So if you were to see a group of individuals in a particular area without a structure, but it's clear from the surrounding circumstances that they're using that area for living accommodations or to sleep there for a certain, for an indefinite period of time, it can be reasonably defined as an encampment. So the definition is like a broad umbrella as to what can fall under this category.
Okay, because I definitely think that encampments won't always include tents, right? Sometimes encampments are kind of like, you know, a blanket on the ground or more, right? So I think that that's something I'm noticing there. Thoughts on that?
At Wildwood Park recently, there were people that, I don't know, it was like a Sprinter van or something. They had some kind of a vehicle, but they clearly, well, I, I felt, based on the totality of the circumstances, that they were living in their vehicle. They didn't even necessarily look like they were destitute or, you know, they may have been choosing to live in their vehicle versus being forced to do so. But it did not make a good advertisement for the Wildwood Park. They had thrown their blankets down and were sleeping. And it, it didn't look like a nice resident in the area. They looked like the kind of people that if I saw them sleeping in the park, I would have taken my children or my nieces and nephews, and I would have said, "We're not going to swing on the playground here." I mean, they looked like they were passed out in a drug coma, you know, and.
That was one of the circumstances that you were observing, maybe their behavior related to their drug use as well.
I mean, I don't know that they were on drugs, because I didn't go up to them and ask them. But my, based on all of my observation, it looked like they were passed out after having used drugs. And, and also having found syringes on the playgrounds in our play structures. I know that people do use our parks for that purpose. So again, putting it all together, so we've had this conversation about people sleeping in the park. And as, as much as I'd like, you know, a, a good law-abiding resident to be able to go and have a nice nap in the sunshine, I'm perfectly pleased for, as this member of the council, to say, "It's a sad thing, but we've reached a day in society where, we just can't allow sleeping in the park because we can't allow the parks to be used either to be a place to go do drugs and pass out afterwards or to habitate." And if that means that we have to ban taking a nap in the sunshine, in my opinion, so be it. It's a place for the kids to have, to run and play, to have a picnic with your family. You know, I, and we've got the Navigation Center, we've got, we've provided you a brand-new bed, warm environment, hot meal, if you want to sleep somewhere. We've provided you with a place to sleep at our expense, and it's, it's a great place. So I, I wouldn't feel guilty about saying no sleeping in the park. That's just me.
Yeah, if I may, based on previous committee discussions, council discussions with staff, the change from this definition based on the prior is that it is no longer reliant on the structures. So that perhaps the council won't have to consider completely banning sleeping because we can, based on again, the totality of the circumstances, determine whether or not there's an encampment without a tent or another structure.
I don't know how you legally, I don't know, that's completely legally perilous. You, you cannot, there, there's no way we're going to win totality of the circumstances based, I mean, you know, it's like, what, based on what I'm wearing, whether I shaved, whether I appear clean, whether my clothing appeared clean. I mean, these are all like status things. We would never survive a court challenge on any of those. They'd be completely perilous. So I just feel like, you know, I, I'm opining in an area that I'm, I'm not legally qualified for here, but I, I don't see how we have a legal leg to stand on. It's got to be one or the other. But that's not what we're here to discuss. It's not even on the agenda, so. And I know we're getting near the end of our time, and I, I appreciate the update on the, the glossary. It's, it's, it's a great work in progress, and I'm really glad that we're doing it. Have any other agencies, have any other agencies expressed interest in our glossary? Or have we shared it with any of them?
We've shared it with the Regional Task Force for them to confirm that a lot of these terms agree with the community standards as directed by the city council.
How do they not have their own glossary?
They do. They have portions of different documents that have these definitions. So we've asked them to look at our document, refer to all those different sources, and confirm that ours agrees with theirs.
I'd be happy to work with them to have a county-wide shared understanding what these terms are. I'm not trying to have our own words, right, this, that. I just want us all to, to the extent that we could have a regional shared understanding of these different terms. Now, obviously, as we've uniquely defined things under the law in Vista, those are going to be specific. But those are, those are, you know, definitions and ordinance. But if there's other things, we, we, you know, we probably should have a as-defined an ordinance section, and then have a like, here's the shared understanding, that's not necessarily an ordinance thing, like it's not a law enforcement thing.
Yep.
It would be good to have a regional tool.
Yeah, they have been reviewing our glossary for the past few weeks. They weren't able to return it for this meeting, but we can expect in June to have their feedback incorporated with the, with the glossary. We'll have another update.
Wonderful.
It's good on my end. Thank you. Finally, we will go to general homelessness updates. What do you have for us there? Any speakers? None still?
Very quickly, Retread was going to share some information. It looks like they had to leave. So first, we know the city council is very big on not using reuse, or not using single-use plastics. Currently at the Retri, or at the BCNC, clients all get a nice water bottle that they can use. Their name gets put on it. All the floors have water filters in the refrigerators, so clients can get clean water without having to reuse, or with being able to reuse a, a bottle here and not have to use single-use plastics. Also with numbers, so since opening, we've had five permanent supportive housing matches, five rapid rehousing matches, and we've serviced four people that have matches prior to entering the program. So just wanted to make sure you guys had an update on that.
Those are, those are some good updates. Thank you. Could I ask, based on the mayor's comments earlier with someone, and many, I've seen this myself, people sleeping in their cars and parking at the parks or other facilities, could we have a specific outreach effort for that in the immediate? I know that we do kind of, hopefully, we're looking for people to enroll in our safe parking program. But especially with the updates today, seems like, you know, we have some space available. And there are certainly folks who are generally going to park in areas like parks and other public amenities and facilities where there's hygiene opportunities and general sense of safety. So if there's someone who has a need in the parks, could we specifically target them for the safe parking program?
Yeah, we can direct our outreach workers to engage with anybody in a vehicle that may be, that may utilize our safe parking program. I can also note that code enforcement has had some overnight illegal parking efforts in addressing those situations, and they always carry information regarding safe parking with them so that if they see somebody sleeping in the vehicle, they can give them that, that flyer to enroll.
And, you know, I'm not sure exactly the operations of our outreach. You know, are they going to the parks, parking lots once a week to check the status of the parks? Are they, you know, just going where the referrals are? Because I have been able to successfully make referrals through our city programs. And so, you know, we're hearing that there is activity in the parks and where people are living out of their car and they're stopping at the parks for some relief. And so there should probably be a bit more coordinated effort there. If there's, if there's not a standard, you know, once a week, check-in on the parks, then I would like to see that instructed.
Yep, currently there's not, so we will implement one.
Anything else on updates?
Is it from staff?
All right, any further oral communications or any other updates from staff or city attorney, city manager, clerk?
Nope, nope, nope.
All right, anything else, Mayor?
No, thank you all.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.